Whoa, whoa, gonna start the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Let's call the May 15th meeting of the Rapid Handing and Planning Commission to the Boarder. And the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda, but before we do that, I would like to propose one addition under Old Business. One question that has arisen is whether we would entertain the idea of putting some kind of time limit on the additional information requested as part of the capillae along application. So it seems to me that it might be sensible to add that item under Old Business if it would be the consensus of the Commission. Not to act on it tonight, but to discuss whether we want to do that and so have it on under Agenda for next meeting. So one item I propose is adding under Old Business. I think that's fine. Is that a second?
Yes. All right, second.
All right. So any further discussion on that? So any other comments or suggestions related to the agenda? All right, hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is to approve our two sets of minutes. The first meeting from our April 17th regular meeting. Those minutes have been available on board docs. I have read them and I had no further comments, but I may not be able to disclose to the others. If they will have any comments on the April 17th minutes. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to the minutes from our May 1st work session.
I just had our one of the minutes please reflect for the chapters two through five. The data updates are actually the staff making those data updates and what I volunteered to do was to review the text after the date was updated.
That is certainly consistent with my recollection. Is that sufficient for to make that correction? I think that word is in front of me, but I certainly recall appreciating that offer. Any other suggested edits to the meeting minutes from May 1st?
I don't know if we adopted that amendment.
Your second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we have several new items of new business this evening, but all of those are preliminary reviews, so there will not be public comments or public hearings associated with each of those items. So the only item that has a separate public hearing this evening is the renewal of agricultural and forestal districts. If you don't mind, I'm in trouble hearing myself. So in a moment, I'm going to open the public comment period. So unless you're here to talk about the renewal of agricultural and forestal districts, this will be your only opportunity to comment this evening. And I guess before I open the comment period, could I just request informally a show of hands of anybody who cares to speak during the public comment period? All right. I think given the number of speakers, I feel like we'd set a general limit of about five minutes. Try to keep yourself to that. If things are not getting too out of control, I'll try to be flexible on that, but please do keep your comments to and trying not to be redundant. With that, I will, well, and I'll also ask if you're planning to make a comment, see if you have the microphone here, I would request that you come to the mic and identify yourself as well as your address or the district where you live. And with that, I will open the public comment period.
Philip Irwin, Flood Hill. I understand that the balloon test for the proposed lattice tower down south of Sperry ville has been postponed from today until Saturday from nine until 12:00 if I'm not mistaken. To me, this lattice tower is one of the worst blights that could possibly hit this county. Driving the commission, there are two basic problems that we have, and that is electronic billboards and cell towers. Every few feet apparently sticking up above the tree line are these cell towers, 200 feet minus one foot, so this minus of the light. We need to figure out how to avoid that type of thing. Rapid Handing County for environmental protection, some years ago, was responsible for the fact that you can't see but one cell tower visible from the highways in this county right now, the one in Englishville. The other ones have been obscured in silos. I think one was against it on the mountain side in Benning. It's possible to have a network of towers that are not visible, that are not of light on the beauty of Rapid Handing County. Please, whatever we do, let's avoid these creepy tall lattice work cell towers.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on now. And if you would like to be next. My turn, please.
Ron Macklin, Jackson District. This is in regards to the comprehensive plan, and I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I've been doing some research basically in the areas of ridge top development, view sheds and whatever, trying to look around wherever to see how this concept is handled elsewhere. Because we spend a lot, I mean, over the years, we have spent a huge amount of time on chapter six. But when you get into what is in chapter six, most of these things are conceptual and they're not really able to be based on codes. So yes, they're important and yes, that's what we want here in Rapid Handing County, but we can't really back them up with codes. I look for case law, I look for codes or whatever. The only thing I'm going to be able to find, North Carolina has some, and it applies to ridge tops, and there, but it has to be above 3,000 feet, and then there are some other aspects as far as slope and all this kind of thing. But there's, you know, it is very difficult to write any kind of a code to enforce any of these concepts. So I mean, we, yes, they need to be there, but we, we need to spend our time on things that we can actually do something about. And so I encourage, you know, I encourage you to look at it from that aspect and that chapter seven and eight, those are plans and implementing plans. And that's where we need to start looking, and that we need to plan for these things and come up with solutions down the road. And in my final moment, I will, I will say that also the thing about the fact that, I mean, we need affordable housing in the county. In regards to chapter six and the view sheds, floor and fauna, all these things, whatever, what's going to have a greater effect on that? 50 homes that are built on 25 acre tracts all through the county or 50 homes that are built on 100 acre tract? Because that's where we're at right now, because the 25 acre tracts are not selling. Small properties will sell, we will get more people into the county, which we need. We could use 1,000 more people, and we need them for a variety of reasons. So we need to make something in this comprehensive plan to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'd like to next?
I'm a resident of the Hampton District, also a candidate for Board of Supervisors. After listening to Phil and to Ron, I just wanted to make a very simple point. On questions of cell towers and how we may make them fit into our county and our beautiful view sheds, I would just encourage the planning commissioners and also the Board of Supervisors, represented by Christine Smith, to think outside of our county. We have a lot of smart people here who talk about these questions, how to solve them. I think Phil articulated it beautifully. We don't need big ugly cell towers, we need self-service. So I just urge you to look at other counties like ours around the country and figure out how other counties similar to ours have addressed problems like the question of fitting cell towers into an otherwise beautiful environment where view sheds are valuable to our county's value. I think we all like to think we're super unique, there's no place like Rapid Handing County. I accept that, but at the same time, we're not that unique. And I just urge all of us on all of these boards and citizens as well to think outside the box and get out and talk to other communities that are facing these same challenges. And I would also add on the question of workforce or affordable housing, let's all push hard to study and get out there and talk to other communities that are facing the same questions. Again, we're a great, neat county, but we're not the only county like ours. And I just ask for us to think outside the box and talk to others to the extent possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak?
Yeah, Deacon Conick from Stonewall District. I sent the commission two letters, so I'm not going to repeat it all. I hope you all got it and read it. And I did want to say what Phil said, and I submitted last month, I think, some suggestions for what you could put in the comprehensive plan about cell towers. So if you get, if and when you get around to discussing it, I'm happy to help write that or modify it or draft it if that's what the commission wants. As far as my own comments, I would like to say, I think we have a growing problem of complete disregard for our land use ordinances. And, you know, what little is in the comprehensive plan in chapter eight about implementation of the comprehensive plan, has the beautiful phrase that's been in there for a long time since, I think, the first edition that says, it depends on the leadership of the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I think one way that this commission, which is principally charged with implementing the comprehensive plan for sure, whatever's in it, could show some leadership by adopting a policy of not entertaining applications from people who are in violation of the ordinance. And there's just way too much tolerance for it, and now you see the result. Last month, you had, and the Board of Zoning Appeals had a case where the zoning ordinance was blatantly violated. And this month, you have two cases at least, but I know them, on your agenda tonight, maybe three, I don't know, where, one of them I addressed in a letter, where they're blatant violations of the zoning ordinance. They've been cited, one of them's been cited four times by the zoning, by two different zoning administrators dating back to October of 2016. And yet here they come in, they file an application, there's a court case pending, it was a civil court case pending and a criminal court case pending. They came in and they applied and you told them what to do and they left. Where are they? I don't know. And now they're going to go to court, say, oh, we're working with the county, because I've heard that before. That's what they come into court and say, oh, Judge, we're working with the county. Yeah, they're working with the county because the county's not doing anything about it. That's what they call working with the county. And so my suggestion is that you ought to adopt a policy that you're not going to entertain applications from people who are in violation of zoning ordinance till they cure their violations. Because all it does is encourage more people to try to violate it and ignore it and see if they get caught. And then if they get caught, then they come in and they finally file, and everybody sits around and says, okay, well, we're really glad you're doing this and trying to get in compliance, because that's kind of a trap, because there's a lot of other people that don't get caught and won't get caught. So that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak? Oh, sorry, I'm adjusting the camera. Does anyone else care to speak?
Excuse me, sir. Is this on any subject or just on yourself?
It's on any subject, and it is the only opportunity to comment other than the hearing on the ag and forestal districts. So if you have anything you'd like to comment on, just leave a comment.
Sure. Thank you. My father will leave the microphone.
If you would, for that recording.
My name's Pastor Paul McKee, and we're here concerning the application with the NPA for a special exception for to put in some camp hookups and some confusion on the situation here. We received a summons on a letter from Mrs. Summers to cease and desist, which we have done and have not been used one day since that. They're only used five days out of the year, that's all they're ever used. We've used them, I guess, what, five times in 38 years. We did not intentionally violate the ordinance, we felt that we weren't able to do that. We presented a, we filed an exception, we filed an appeal to the DCA, it was refused because they said it was late. The letter was sent the 22nd, signed from the 27th. I assumed that the 30 day would begin from the 27th instead of the day it was sent. That also happened a week of Thanksgiving, everything was closed down, closed down on Wednesday, I think, so we filed it the very next day, opened on Monday, which would be the 26th. So that, you know, we're going to explain at that time why we did that. So that's over with, that 30 days over, so we went to the next step, which was to file for a special exception, which is what we have done. I put on that permit that I turned in, paper that I turned in, excuse me, filing order, that we originally, 38 years ago, there were 13 spots approved for one year. There was a variance given for one year. And what we did was we simply repaired the lines, because they'd said they're for 38 years. We went there in the spring of 2018. At the end of our meeting in 2017, we had a problem with the bathhouse, some of the toilets had backed up, so we knew we were going to have to clean through, stake out the lines, found the tanks, cleaned out the distribution box, found the dosing tank, there were additional put lines were added, and we made sure that part was working and so forth. And then we simply just repaired the water line, we're 38 years old, so we took that and repaired those lines, same thing, we just simply put those back in, that had been there, we just replaced what was there. We did not put in a new campground. The gravel was put because, of course, it was so much rain, it was so much rain last year. We put gravel on it so the trailers wouldn't be buried in the mud and the people stepped out, but they would not get in the mud. That's why the gravel was put there, not for an additional parking lot, it was simply so that the trailers would park there, they wouldn't sink in the mud. I know that's where they were, because 38 years ago, I was 25 years old in Atlantis, and I parked a 35 foot Country Air fifth mill, and there was a tax spot. So I know, I know that's where they were, was representative that we had put the trailer quarter, the center tanks, that's not true. I don't know who came on property, took pictures, no one was authorized to do so. Someone came in on the property, took pictures, area roped off there by the way as where the tanks are, the distribution box and the dump station, that's been there for 38 years. All that stuff was there. Same water line, same grain field. We talked, we met with Medge, a lady from zoning, and Mr. Dixon, we met with him on property twice. There's no problem with the capacity of the grain field, there's plenty of capacity, plenty of capacity for that. And abandoned now, and then we may have to make a few modifications. Now, I don't, didn't know, we're trying to talk to Mr. Grigsby here, I've been trying to talk to each one of the adjoining landlords. I talked to Mary Ford last night, her property joins it, she has no problem with it. And then we were talking to Mr. Grigsby, ran out of time tonight, trying to talk with him about the situation. I don't know if the, if the opposition is just to the trailers or to where they're at. The original site plan calls for 30 in the southwest corner of a property. And if that's where the, you know, if that's where the board would like to give us an exception, that's fine, if they want us to put them there, then that's fine. I just thought maybe that seven would be more palatable to our neighbors than, you know, three. That was my thinking there, if we put just seven, that might be, you know, they might be seven than three. So they were, those spots there were approved in 1980, for variance for one year, which was only for one year. And of course, the constituency which complicates this whole situation did not allow us to have it, because at that time it was a residential. It's been in 1986, the zoning law changed that to agriculture, which allows travel trailer parks by exception. So that's the situation on that. Maybe, of course, I do want it clear, we are not putting in, I know this state of Virginia may say it's a travel trailer park, but we can only use the property 15 days out of the year, okay? We're not renting trailer spots. Anyone that comes there just simply as an accessory to the meeting, we had men that drive from West Virginia, Charlottesville, Berkeley Springs, and is this simply just a place for these people to stay for five nights? I mean, that's all it's for, not for travel trailer park or anything of that nature, simply just some overnight accommodations. If anyone lives in, I lived here for 11 years, didn't want those Rapid Handing County, there's no Motel 6s or Holiday Inn Expresses, and there's no, you know, there's no camp hookups anywhere, you know? And so we were just simply trying, and all we ever wanted was just simply accommodate people who came, that's all.
Thank you. I'm sorry to realize you were an applicant, we will very likely be asking you questions before.
I just didn't want my time to pass.
I understand. But we may very well, when we get to your application, have questions or take some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak for that one? Yes, sir.
James Grigsby. I live across from the campground there, that's all I think, ladies and gentlemen, you give me the opportunity to speak. We're talking about campers coming in. An instance last year, I knew I had any campground, there was a camper parked there, there was a gentleman on that lot that shot 50 times. I called the sheriff department, it will be logged if you care to investigate. They told me they couldn't do anything about it. Problem is, you know, this is a religious site, you're going to bring people like that, that is one instance, you're going to have more trailers come in, who's going to monitor these people? I don't know who comes there. And I have no problem with the activities there, but I do have a problem when campers are coming in, I don't know for Texas, California, why I'm in there, so I'm concerned about that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, I will close the public comment period. And that brings us to one public hearing this evening with respect to the renewal of the agricultural and forestal districts for Jenkins Mountain and Massey Exton District. Summer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Jenkins Mountain and Massey Exton agricultural and forestal districts are up for renewal as they expire the first of June. They first were created in 1981 and have continued to be renewed each time. This program of agricultural and forestal districts is a completely voluntary program in which the property owners within the district give up their rights to development. The, both districts are proposed for another term of 10 years. The advisory committee met earlier this evening at 6 o'clock, and they recommended approval of both the districts. Planning Commission will need to make a recommendation, and the board will hear this for public hearing as well on June 3rd agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Summer. With that, I will open the public hearing of these agricultural and forestal districts. Anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Yes, sir.
Phil Irwin, Flood Hill. There are several methods of assuring that open space maintains itself, and this is the second best. The first one, of course, is the open space easement, which is a perpetuity, in perpetuity, you can go in the right sort of light and encourage the development of the house all over the place. But this is the second best. It's the good for, what, 10 years at the present time? And if you want to get out of it, you can, you will have to stay in it, but you have to do a rollback tax, pay the rollback tax. So anyway, may I encourage the support of the concept, because it's one of the good tools that we have in our toolbox.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak on the matter of the work?
Conick, Stonewall District, what he said.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your credit.
I knew you would. I want the credit for it.
Anyone else who would like to speak? If not, I will hereby close the public hearing on the agricultural districts. I turn to fellow commissioners. These are, these are not, these are across several districts, and I, I'm going to suggest that we treat them en masse rather than individually, but if someone would like to bring up matters associated with any individual, certainly open to that, but any commentary or inclination to move this matter? Mr. Bird, are you?
We're continuing with the forestal districts.
Yes, we're still on the matter of the forestal district.
I happen to agree with Mr. Irwin and Mr. Conick that these are useful and effective means of keeping agriculture possible in Rapid Handing County and avoiding unnecessary development. So I tend to be for it and agree with it.
I concur, and I guess I just wonder, is the, will there be a public hearing on this, Michelle, that I understand is by this body, or is it going to go back to the board?
This is a public hearing currently by this body.
Oh, that's right.
In the June 3rd Board of Supervisors meeting, there will be also a public hearing.
Okay, great, yes. Let's start.
I'm in the court, I believe that this is of good use and we should move forward.
Mr. Hendrick? So would anyone like to move us on this matter?
I'm moving, don't approve, and pass it to the board.
Second. For approval, thank you. Move to the second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So that's unanimous. Now we move on to New Business. The first item is the National Nationwide Pentecostal New Angeles Stick Association for Travel Trailers application that has, that has been discussed. Before I turn it over to Ms. Summers, I guess I, on the matter of the application being in or out of compliance, I do see these as complicated matters, and I wish we had means of avoiding them. I'm not personally prepared to support the idea that we make a blanket policy that we don't consider applications, because in many cases, coming into compliance is simply to cease and desist as has been done. So that being said, I think what's before us tonight is something that we should be looking at, at least in part, in light of how it comports with the current comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. And my suggestion is that there may be other extending legal circumstances that those are matters for the court, and for us... And for us, my recommendation is that we proceed to consider this in light of the application and its comport, how the proposed use comports with our ordinance and comprehensive plan. But that's my view, but I would be open to thoughts in support or to the contrary. Anybody here, is there any?
I'd like to hear from the zoning administrator. Thank you. Again, this is a preliminary review of this application. The NPEA has applied for special exception for a travel trailer park for the property located at five fourteen Arum Mount Road, which is in the Jackson District. The property is zoned agricultural. They would use this property for travel trailer camping during their retreats at the property. This application is a result of an ongoing violation and court proceedings dating back to the start of the nineteen eighties. Back in nineteen eighty-one, there was a court litigation regarding this matter that resulted in a court decree being issued and reported by a circuit court. Within the court decree describes that the NPEA is restrained, prohibited, and enjoined from using this, using the property for a campground, motorhome court, camper court, or other activity involving overnight camping or temporary lodging during camp meetings, including the use of seasonal travel trailers. Whatsoever unless, until if and only if the zoning ordinance of Rapid Hand County is amended by the governing body to permit the use. The ordinance was indeed amended shortly thereafter to allow this use by special exception. The court decree also states that a maximum of thirty trailers or campers that, and that they be located to the southwest side of the property. Currently, the hookups are not located according to the court decree. The applicants have requested two locations be considered. Their first choice is where the current hookups are located on the eastern portion of the property. Their second choice is the southwestern portion of the property where the court decree declared that they shall be located. I have not received any comments back from Vida regarding this application. The Health Department indicated they will need more information from the applicant before providing an official comment on the application. Mr. Markey is here. He is the chair of the Board of Trustees to answer any questions. Also, I would suggest that the commission consider the supplement regulations within the zoning ordinance. They're attached to board docs. It's section one seventy dash sixty-five.
So can I ask you a question? So zoning changed after the court decree that is now permitted with a special exception?
Correct.
The court decree said that there could be, how many?
Thirty.
Thirty. And what do they have or what do they ask for?
Their first choice, I believe, Mr. Markey, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the existing seven in the current location. If not, their second choice would be the southwestern location for thirty.
So you either want seven or thirty?
Well, my, my, like I said, my, my only follow on that was that, well, maybe seven would be less offensive to our neighbors than thirty. I was, well, I'm saying we can live with seven. But if that's not agreeable, then...
How many did you do last summer?
Four. We had, we actually had four.
Yeah, four.
We restored, originally, the original variance. There was a variance given in nineteen eighty, there was a variance given for thirteen trailers. And that's when we had to add the twelve, there were twelve lines, additional lines added, a dosing tank, all that was added in nineteen eighty and approved. Put in by Mr. Compton, Richard Compton. Everybody knows Richard. Put in by Richard Compton and approved, all that was approved. And then, but it was given for one year. Then, of course, the consent decree came in and we were, you know, we were not allowed to use them unless and until the zoning laws were changed to allow that. And it's also, two other words have been left out and that's or otherwise. My special exception, there's two more words that play a lot of weight. That's called or otherwise, which means there could be other circumstances that would allow you to do that. Our appeal to the BZA was gonna deal on those two words, or otherwise. But that passed, we're all with that now, we'll just leave it like it is. And so, if the board wants us to put, if they were suspect for exception for thirty in the southwest corner, that's fine. I just thought maybe it might be more palatable to our neighbors just to have seven instead of thirty.
So, Michelle, at the present time, what is happening in the circuit court?
There's pending litigation from the county and then civil matter.
And our litigation is cease and desist or what's the intention? Just cease and desist from using?
At that, at that point in time, yes, because no permit was approved.
For, for, for use of four, then, yeah?
Seven.
Seven. And how big is this site size?
I'll be honest, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't measure. They have, they have a certain, we, we did meet the manager twice, we met with him twice. Manager and Mr. Dixon, we met with him twice. And I gave them some additional paperwork showing the twelve lines. When we first met, they didn't have anything. So we found out, we provided all the drawings and so forth. I got, you know, showing the green fields and stuff like that. Again, they said that there was plenty of green field, there was no problem there. There may be a few modifications we would have to make, but they said from the last meeting with Mr. Dixon, one of the, one of the main worries was the compaction. Where the trailers were actually parked, reparked over the additional twelve lines and they worried about the compaction. So he, there was one of two solutions, either pave where the trailers were parked, the same, the seven spots would be paved so that, you know, the dirt cannot be compacted. But he said, Mr. Dixon said, that they've been given greater jurisdiction in this year and that possibility that they will be only gonna use five nights a year, that that might not be necessary. But I, I told him, I said, well, it's like this, you know, I don't know how it's gonna work out. If we're allowed, you know, to use these, whatever we have to do, you know, whatever, you know, whatever we have to conform to to meet the health regulations, we'll conform. Just whatever they tell us to do, we'll do.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, yeah.
I would like to highlight one of the remarks Ms. Summers made and that is to refer commissioners to the Rapid Hand County Code.
One seventy sixty-five.
If you look, I believe that for our matter here this evening, there's a lot of extending weighted circumstances, but with respect to the approval of a travel trailer park, there are additional standards that are to be met in the event that we are going to consider a special exception permit. And I think it would be somewhat, or quite a thought, completely definitive to look at the, those standards. I think the ones that I would particularly raise to your attention is that the road front requirement shall be two hundred feet on the state maintained road with a minimum paved width of twenty feet. I don't, I didn't, don't know the measurement of the two hundred feet, but I, I, looking at that road, I'm pretty confident that the width is not, is not twenty feet. The paved width of Arum Mount Road is probably more like eighteen. The other item that I think is germane here is item number five. The density shall not exceed three camping sites per acre. It's not a major deal, but according to that requirement, a nine acre per acre, you would be eligible for more than twenty-seven. And regardless of what a consent decree might have otherwise allowed. And finally, and this one I think has not been discussed at all, each campsite shall contain a minimum of three thousand square feet. I don't think we've seen anything on the site plan that indicates the size of each site. There's also a question about, you know, structure of campsite being within a hundred feet of any lot line and, you know, et cetera. There are others here that may also come to bear. But it strikes me with respect to the consideration of this application at the outset that it's at least worth some consideration as to how, whether and how the application is conforming with those additional standards.
Well, I think by addition to those ones that you outlined, the additional concerns would be something from the Health Department regarding a water situation on the property and also something from Vida that might eliminate, you know, what's at home with the road situation.
And that is the standard number eight, so that's another one. These are standards we can't waive.
Mr. White, I, I did meet with Vida. I did meet with Vida and, but on that side. And he's, he said there were no, he said that there was no restrictions on the road as far as allowing campers. He said there was, there was not a restricted road. He said the entrance and the egress were fine. He was supposed to have sent a report to, Mr. Summers, we tried to get a hold, we tried to get a hold of the city road after the Vida office.
Well, just to be clear, these are not Vida requirements. These are requirements of the Rapid Hand County Code for the location of the use of the campgrounds. And the idea is that the, you can wonder why the code says this, but the code says...
Another question would be this, would those not apply to like a commercial travel trailer park rather than just an accessory use?
Well, that's...
I will thank some, that should be given some consideration that we're not at. I understand maybe by definition that it's a travel trailer park, but in reality, no one's gonna operate a commercial travel trailer park five nights out of the year and not charge anybody. That's not what...
I understand your point, but I think what we're trying to reconcile is, obviously, this use is arguably not exactly what was envisioned when this standard was imposed, but our job is to at least look at and consider these standards.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Conick, I'd appreciate if you'd keep those comments out a little bit. So, any other questions or discussion? It seems to me that at a minimum, we are, we are missing information that would allow us to at least consider conformity with these standards, whether we seek some, some relief or some consideration. I'm not sure that we can legally do so, frankly, given the nature of the code. But if we, even if we were so inclined, it seems to me we would want an application that clearly addresses the extent to which the, these additional standards are, are being complied with.
Got a question?
Please.
Mr. Markey, you submitted a sketch here, I guess?
Yes.
And, and that's something that you recently formulated?
That's nineteen eighty, sir.
That's nineteen eighty?
Yes, sir.
So, so today, you have the tabernacle list up here and that's, that's the structure that's there, that's the metal building?
Yes, sir.
And then you had, somebody wrote below their park and a hundred and twelve guests. And I guess, I didn't go down there.
Yeah, I can show you.
But is that, is that a parking lot there now?
Where is that now, sir?
The list is here, a hundred and twelve guests.
Please, please, pardon me, sorry. This is tabernacle, correct?
Oh, here's a tabernacle.
Here's a tabernacle, okay. Okay, there's parking here and then here. And this was, the snack hall was this, what was, says parking, that became the fellowship hall. And then this area here?
Snack park.
That became a, that was mandated to become a fellowship hall.
And how, how big is that?
That's two thousand square feet, I believe. Could, could not be over two thousand square feet.
Okay.
So that's, that's two thousand square foot. And then the present fairs are here, the spots are here.
Okay.
They're like, they're like...
And all this fucking here was...
It's just wood.
It's wood?
No, it's just wood.
And Mr. Brigsby, property, is that here?
Somewhere right across from Watson Road.
Right where it says fifty foot private room? Right, right on that side, right on the property. He's on the corner between Arum Mount and Watson. What it said was this fifty foot private room is now...
We're also planning, I think, either two or three rooms of sacred pines. But all that, I guess, a lot of pride to it.
I guess the intent, I think, probably, we, we missed this written on the three campers per acre was assuming that you have a twenty-five acre site where this site was gonna be used totally for a campground. And I think probably here, we already have uses of roughly four acres out of nine acres in terms of the worship hall, the tabernacle, the park and to that area. And I guess really what you're really looking at is maybe four or five acres that really is qualified into an area not into a cultivation for, to camp space on the whole property. So I think probably the twenty-seven is, is what, in that approach, is an unrealistic number to, to deal with. When y'all have your fifteen day, five day...
We're allowed to use it fifteen days, but we use it five, we use it five days.
Do you have a lot of people coming in and out each day? What's your...
Well, we have, the, the way it works, we have, we have, our first service is Monday night. Our service Tuesday night, service Wednesday night. And we have a morning service on Thursday morning, then a service at night. At Friday morning, we have a morning service and then a service Friday night.
What does a gunfire come to play?
Well, your honor, I mean, excuse me. Sorry. It was just a court party, had a riot yesterday. Anyway, that was, that was an individual that did not mean any harm. That was not intended to create a disturbance, just a gentleman there that was just shooting that southwest corner where there's nothing. We addressed that issue, that individual has, did not do that anymore and will not do that anymore. If we were allowed, I would certainly explain to anyone that parked there, this is not a, we're not going to do it in part of the practice. Our neighbors don't appreciate that, let's not do that. You know, I mean, that was, that was not fun to antagonize. It's legal, it's legal. There's some things are lawful, but they're not expedient. And although it was lawful, it was not expedient to our cost. So I, I did apologize to Mr. Brigg before that and, you know, I'm sorry. I apologize if that happened. Another thing we might consider too, that we consider on this, and that's one seventy dash sixty-three one. And that, on eighty-six, that was a part of the code that allowed for overnight accommodations for monasteries and such like facilities. Now monastery, of course, is a, a place where men, they spend, retire for religious instruction and so forth. This is what, this is what we have, we have time of religious instruction, teaching. Our young preachers come and, you know, so I think that should bear on this too, you know. Another thing I think we, I would ask you to consider since, since all this has happened and that eighty-six consent decree or zoning changes, they have allowed the fire departments in the, in the county to have five days of carnivals along with carnivals. Carnivals, I think everyone knows, that those that follow carnivals live in trailers and campers and stuff like that. Or as I know of, the park and that, the fire grounds. Another thing that's, I think, has been a big game changer, there's been a lot of libraries entered into the county. They have open air concerts, they have motorhome, they have camper hookups.
Thank you, sir.
We're going, we're going out one.
Return to deliberations, please. Any other questions or suggestions? Mr. Andrew, if you still...
Well, I guess this is Hampton District, so this, you know, this is my opinion, opinion here. If anybody wants to go along with it. This is a little bit of a, of a different use. We don't see too many religious requests for property usage. And we've seen some churches and, and uses here and there. I guess we see a lot of uses for Airbnb, bread and breakfasts, overnight lodging. And I guess, you know, if you had a house here on this property, you, or two houses, you would have potential...
you would have potential to use it every night of the year. I don't think this site is appropriate for 27 trailers. I think that's, it's too intensive use. I think you got a lot of the site here that's wooded. I would hope that, you know, we could come to a compromise here that address what they want to do for a week out of the year and give some assurances to the neighbors. And Mr. Briggsby across the road, who I guess has probably been watching the situation for 38 years, then, you know, it's more of a defined plan, cap put into place here that manages all this, that we can come up with something that maybe everybody can live with. And when I say that, you know, I'm thinking, you know, in terms of southern. And that's it. And if you don't need 15 days a year, southern days, I think we probably fulfill your all's needs. And, you know, have it meet the other screening requirements, setback to the property lines and these kind of things. And maybe some issue on lighting too. But there's no light in the beach, the private...
Big point.
Light, lighting?
The lighting, your honor.
So we talk, we need more lighting, but we have to.
Well, just that it doesn't leave the property, you know, just control on it.
Yeah, well, if we, we addressed, I'd say, 38 years ago, you know, addressed the lighting problem. I don't think that's a problem. We'll put shingles and stuff like that, you know.
It hasn't been this long.
And then we planted those, I think, either two or three shaggy rows of pines. I mean, we can't see, I can't see Mr. Briggsby's house through woods.
And I think what you would have to do, it would be good, you know, to do a new site plan and be more specific, probably get with a survey and really absolutely nail down these areas that might have pencil and pen drawn areas. Have it absolutely nailed down to make sure the area is defined, the setbacks defined. And so there's less room for error in the next 38 years.
And we did talk to Meg and she explained this about the minimum size for the lots, you know. And I, she explained all that to us. I mean, like I said, we're not asking for adult sewage out on the ground or anything of that nature. You know, we're not asking to circumvent any of the, you know, the requirements that have to be done. But just as far as...
What I'm saying is that, you know, we come back with a site plan professionally drawn and it spells out what we expect from you and what your neighbors expect from you. So you cannot leave the ground and be certain that you're doing everything right. This is in terms of the setbacks and, you know, from the property lines and these kind of issues. And whether, absolutely where the trailers are, where you moved the land. And for the southern, so everybody knows where everything is.
Right.
Is that, is a footprint, just like if you built a house, you did a house location...
Yeah, so you're wanting, I understand exactly right. You would want a drawing of where the seven are now. Is that correct?
You want a drawing of where everything is.
Yeah.
Well, and I would, I would, thank you, Mr. Henry. But I would just say, again, please take a look at the relevant sections of the code. I understand your point that some of these may, maybe shouldn't apply heavily given the other extenuating circumstances of limited use, et cetera. But these are the standards and somehow we need to be mindful of, you know, what we're doing. And your site plan right now, you know, in its age and in its form is, doesn't really give us the information to do this. So we, I think, and again, I guess I'd like to step back and note that tonight, this is a preliminary review. And typically what we do in a preliminary review is decide if we're, we have enough information to recommend proceeding to a public hearing. Quite often, if we don't feel we have that information, we do, as Mr. Henry has done, which is to recommend additional information that would make for a more complete application for us to consider in our recommendations. And I, am I mischaracterizing anything?
No, sir.
So that's what we're saying. Right now, essentially, we're doing kind of a completeness and adequacy review of the application itself. That's probably the best way to think about what we're doing. What Mr. Henry is pointing out is some things that I think are consistent with the other sentiments expressed, that we really need to see before this thing proceeds to the next stage, which would be most likely a public hearing or possibly a recommendation to the board supervisor. Other comments, other commissioners would like to weigh in a moment?
I just agree that I see no reason to schedule it for public hearing until it's demonstrated in one through nine, and we met. And so it's a little more than just a second.
I would agree with Mr. Henry.
Well, I concur. And I also wonder if it would benefit us when things come before us that are incomplete and are, you know, in litigation, if it would be of use to put a, you know, a cap on the extension. You know, so that, at that point, we would basically, I mean, I don't know if we could deny it or we just wouldn't take it up after a certain amount of time.
That's a good point against our, the point we added to the agenda tonight about the capielli application.
Yes, I mean, I think certainly, I think certainly 60 or 90 days would be appropriate to get the details lined up. And that way, you know, move through it expediently. I did look up 170-63, and it does talk about religious facilities, but it is also clear that the same regulations apply to religious facilities as would follow the use of property. So we certainly are on the right track of doing this campground.
That would be more for a permanent structure. Mr. Berg, would you...
Yes, I feel that this application offers what seems to me a win-win for everybody in that if it is limited to seven hookups and a site plan, as Mr. Henry suggested, that is very specific and enforceable, that it would minimize further destruction to the landscape. It would maximize the protection of the neighbors. And it would be beneficial in terms of not costing the, any more money in terms of replication things that are already here. And so I think if you can comply with Mr. Henry's idea of a very good, specific, and then enforceable site plan, that would be to everybody's benefit.
That was sort of my thinking, you know, that rather than go down there and tear out the trees and all that stuff that's there, by nights, it would be better just to, if it's possible to make those work, that, I mean, like I said, this Meg, I'm sure she will tell you that the septic system is plenty sufficient. They did a, actually did a reading on the water back in 1980. The water usage, I think the first night was like 240 gallons. Well, night, like 300. I think the most water ever used in one, in one day was like 1,000 gallons. And that's, that field is capable of 1,800 gallons per day.
So if I may, just to add one thing and to summarize. I don't believe Mr. Henry was saying, and Mr. Henry, please correct if I'm wrong, that we're talking about necessarily sticking to your first option, which is having the seven where they currently are. I think that the point is, we need a clear plan that would allow us to have the proper, have the sites configured in a way that preferably comports to these standards, but at least clearly is indicative where they are. So I fear with some of your comments, you're sort of hearing that we're on just your option A. And I don't know, Mr. Henry, if I'm mischaracterizing your point, but I thought where you were going was the four acres to the southwest is only like a smaller portion of the lot. And that was what you were talking about when you came up with, you know, a smaller number. But I don't mean to put words in your mouth. I just want to make sure that we're not giving mixed signals here.
What I'm saying is that I think if you look at the uses of the site, that some of the sites have already been used and for other uses of camping. So in terms of calculation, I don't think you have a site area to calculate for 27 lots. But I'm not saying that the area has to be located in the, I guess, looking there in the bottom portion of the property or in the western or southern of the property. I mean, it's wherever, I think if you, if you already got seven sites that are not 100 feet from, greater than 100 feet from the property line, I'm willing to look at those seven sites that they already have, or four sites that they already have.
I will make a point that until the court decree is changed, they're restricted to the southwest portion.
I guess that's what I was getting at. You're, so you're not going to have to only satisfy the special exception. You're going to presumably, and this is our job to tell you, you may have to deal with what the consent decree also requires. So I think, just wanted to be clear that you didn't hear what we were saying tonight as we were supporting the currently located seven sites that you're working on. We're saying, we're basically saying, we don't think there's enough room for 27. Mr. Henry's saying seven seems right. And I think what we're all saying is, give us a plan where you think those seven should be that comports to the requirements. And I would also say, just because I'm trying to empathize with what you're hearing, you've heard slightly different things from each of us. At the end of the day, we will have to have something, a vote that sends a recommendation for approval or denial. So I think what we've just been discussing is individual, individual ideas or thoughts on the matter. But I wouldn't want you to come away thinking that any individual comment tonight is a guarantee that if you do that, you're in. Okay? That's what I'm just wanting to be clear. Yes, Mr. Henry?
So the zoning change and the decree allowed for address. If the zoning was changed, then the decree changed for the item, no?
No. The decree said if the county ordinance changed, they specified where they then would be placed in the maximum number. The code changed, but the court decree still says that they have to clock this permit and obtain it to have the period. But the court decree dictates where they are to be placed. And until a judge changes that, the planning commission, board supervisors, cannot override that.
If I may, does it state the southwest corner?
It does.
Which is the back, if you're looking at the flat, is the area where you have 30 at the moment. Not up on the front.
So I wish we could bring this to a clearer point for the applicants, but I feel like we've kind of exhausted it.
Are there more hearings coming up on this in court? Or is it just...
Yes, I don't have the date.
That is, it's supposed to come until sometime, I don't know about the exact date, but it's...
The case for contempt is what's continued because they agreed, and the order hadn't been entered yet, but they agreed and the judge joined them from using it as a campground until further order of court. But what Ms. Summers said is exactly right. And this site plan is what was attached, was supposed to be attached to the 1981 decree. That's what the court, that's what we all agreed to, that if the zoning changed, then, and if and only if that happens, as was the sale, then they could have up to 30. But they had to be where they're drawn, and that drawn in the southwest corner. And so what's there now, I don't know when, I don't know. I heard, I heard say they were put in 1980. That's not my reference. But anyway, regardless, they're not in the southwest corner. And those are in, that's also in there. They can't use them anymore, which is the reason for the contempt thing. Now, the county files a separate suit that Michelle, as the plaintiff in, seeking to have those seven camper sites removed because they're illegal. And that hasn't been set for hearing. That's a statement.
Their error in that was, because it's never...
If I may, I feel like we've got a lot of items on the agenda. We can have this for a while. I think we're going to resolve this. I think what, what is clear is, we've got a zoning ordinance and a special exception process that we are responsible for assuring compliance. You also have a legal and a court-issued mandate. Ultimately, you're going to have to navigate both of those sets of requirements. And I wish we could be a little more clear than that. But I don't think we're going to resolve all of that here this evening.
We're going to have to navigate it too, because you're under the court order as well. The county's under the court order.
So, let me ask you...
Sure.
Do you have legal counsel? Do you have legal counsel?
We have it at this, at this point. We have, we have had, we've had some pro bono advice from the Christian Law Association in Ohio, but they're not licensed to operate in the state of Virginia. Now, we will have to, of course, when we go to court, we're going to have to take counsel. We understand that, you know. But as far as the removal of those, there's no way to have a consent decree anywhere that says that those campers, that those spots would be removed. It's nowhere that's consent decree. Now, we're in a fucked up attitude.
I appreciate that. I really would not want to get into a debate about what their consent decree is. Thank you, thank you for that. I understand you've got other matters. But if I may, I mean, commissioners, is there anything else we can question with respect to our consideration of the special exception requirements here? I don't want to move us on too quickly, but I also feel like we're kind of wandering into a wilderness of sorts.
I do just want to emphasize the importance of having something in writing from the Health Department and from the Department of Plan Transportation. Because while it's all fine and good, then in the course of this meeting, we hear certain things. After this, if it should be approved, it would go to the board supervisors and we need the documentation for that process. And then should it be approved or not approved, you know, it'll need to be documented for posterity. So I just want to impress upon folks, so while I appreciate what you're saying tonight, for us, it's really important that the packet be complete with all the materials because of the process. Thank you.
When I spoke to both of them, they told me, I explained to them what we were doing. They said they were going to send a copy to Michelle and to me. And they failed to do that.
I have reached out to both offices and I've gotten your back.
Well, I think those parts of this thing are very, my dear, last major parts that can be easily addressed. You know, I think, you know, what you have here, you've got, you've got cease and desist. You've got court issues here. You've got the, what was done in the 1980s by the court. You know, we're kind of saying to you, you know, that we would consider seven. We're not saying we would approve seven, but we're saying that we would probably consider seven for a week. You know, you really need local legal counsel to help you with this, for what we're saying, for what you have to do in court, or what you have to do with the judge and with your neighbors. You really need local legal counsel to help you, you know. If we did anything, if we approved anything or considered to approve anything, our approval, the first time we would have ever done this, if we did it, would be subject to court approval. But we might get your approval, but it still may not be any good because the court would have to prove it because they put restrictions on this land back in the 1980s. So you're kind of, you've got different ropes on you.
It's a complex situation, but I promise you that. That's not lost on me, I promise you.
All right, any other, any other questions for the applicant or points to make? I feel like we may have exhausted this one for this evening. Appreciate your information. All right, with that, a motion of some sort with respect to the request for additional information, would you like to take a snap at that, Mr. Henry? And see if you could, if I could make a second.
So, Michelle, you've taken a check and then cashed it?
Well, I didn't check it.
Well. The only way that we could consider this is if you did a site plan and addressed a lot of the things, all the things that we talked about. Plus, addressed the things of the court case in 1980. And we would consider a site plan plus the nine things listed here that you have to deal with. Okay?
And we would consider a site plan plus the nine things listed here that you have to deal with, okay? Most of these, I think you can deal with. Probably the biggest one is to make sure that the state road is 20-foot paved. If not 20-foot paved, you've got an issue there. So if you want to come back with a site plan, addressing the campground in the area the court said, seven campers, and if nine items, we would consider it. But it would probably, it would be with a stipulation, it would be subject to court approval if we did it. And it would have to be professionally done by a surveyor so that everything is accurate. So if that would be what we would be looking for. And probably the time requirements to get that done with a surveyor and everything is probably 60 days.
Well, I would, I would say this. If we're going to go at the expense of putting a road back in the southwest corner, and of course that means another septic system, either running a well line all the way out there or drilling another well, developing camp sites. I just, I would at least want to have the best, if we can have, was it three per acre? I would certainly want approval for 27. If we're going to go to that expense and put a road and a well, we'll have to have another septic system and all of that stuff.
This is where you need an attorney to help advise you, to work through negotiations with the circuit court and these kind of things. So, you know, 27, it's like buying a lottery ticket, parabola, okay?
So, again, I, with all due respect, I'd like to try to turn this into, I don't think that was quite a motion.
This is my motion.
Yeah, so, well, I think for a motion, okay, fine, you'd like to try and put it... Because I think we need, I think the issues for the motion are generally that we need the site plan and additional information to demonstrate compliance with our local code. And, you know, those are the, a lot of these other things, I would say, are extraneous to that. So, would you want to try that again?
Make a motion that we set up an application based upon fulfilling the nine requirements of the code section, also looking at the site containing seven camp sites and subject to the final approval of the circuit crew.
So, if I may, it seems to me that what you're suggesting is that we table the matter in order to, and request that the applicant provide that additional information. You have to stick on both, because that's, that's the action that we're trying to use to move this application to our process now. Do you have that reasonably well? Is anybody in a position to second that?
I would suggest that in addition to that, as to the amount and duration of the use of the property also as part of the...
The operating plan, sort of an operating plan.
The operating plan.
To clarify the, I would say that's, I'm just trying to move us here. But I think that would be in light of the idea that we're, we, some of us at least may consider a less than robust interpretation of these requirements only under some additional factors about the limited operation, so. Sorry, yes, Mr. Collier?
I feel like we're trying to be too specific as to what the applicant needs to do. I think we're trying to put, we may be missing something. I don't think we're not attorneys. I don't think we should be strapping them with our requirements. I think we should table it until they, it's the time when they are ready to bring it back for a full presentation.
Well, they can't bring it back with a full presentation unless they have some indication of what we're going to be looking for.
Well, I feel like the discussion tonight has laid out a lot of things, and we're never going to capture all of them in a motion. So I'm sympathetic to Mr. Collier's point. I think we will have minutes, the recordings are here. I think to the extent that there's a motion required, it's to table further application of this app, this, sorry, table further consideration of this application pending additional information to address the various compliance and site and operational issues that have been discussed this evening. To me, that is about as full as it can be. And in fact, in the type to move us on, I will move that we table this, table further consideration of this application for at least 30 days to allow the applicant time to submit additional information, to give a detailed site plan, to provide further evidence of compliance with the code standards, and any relevant operational plans that they think would be relevant to our consideration of whether all those standards should or should not apply.
That sounds very good.
Well, they can't do it in 30 days.
At least in a minimum. And frankly, I'm not sure that the minimum...
I don't need a minimum.
Don't need a minimum, scratch the minimum. Just we move to table it until such time.
It's not such a time as we present.
Did you present?
I accept it, I got the picture.
Thank you, I'm glad somebody does. Mr. Collier, I have, we have a move and a second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Summers, do you feel that you've captured that? Would it be, would it be too much to ask you to, it would be too much to ask you to restate it? Motion's moved a second, any further discussion?
Table for further consideration to give the applicant more time. Excuse me, let me back this up. Table to a further time for consideration of a detailed site plan, evidence of compliance with the gravity chemical code and operational plan.
I think we discussed the minimum amount of dates and did we decide to include that, but did we want to include a maximum amount of days?
To me, the matter is, we don't, we're really outside of anything related to the requirements. That's why I put it in terms of operational details that the applicant thinks are relevant to our consideration of whether the requirements should or should not be strictly applied. Again, with the assumption that we had any discretion on the matter, which I'm sure there are at least one or two people in the room who would say we don't. So, that's what I'm saying. And again, I don't want to be writing this application or saying what it is exactly we need, because we're really, to me, the issue is, in writing, further articulation of any operational practices that the applicant thinks would be relevant to our consideration of the standards. And that would include operating times and, you know, limits and some of these...
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I mean, in terms of maximum time for the application to come back before us.
All right, thank you, I completely misunderstood. Going back to our point, do we, do we want to give them a deadline? I'm not sure. We haven't been doing that. I guess my motion did not include it. I feel like that's only going to wrap us further around the axle, because that would leave us with no choice at that point. I guess we would take it up again and decide to give them more time. But if we said, what we'd be doing is, I mean, what would we do with the expiration of that time? I guess in your, in your mind, I, recommending denial if we don't have it? I guess I'm not clear what we would do upon expiration of that deadline.
If it's an expiration of the deadline, we could put it on the agenda as a business and deny it.
Okay.
Or you would hold the public hearing, because at this point, we haven't even held a public hearing.
Yeah, it's 15 days out, we have the application, we have the, you know, notes for public hearing. Note to applicant, add a 90-day mark or whatever, you know, in the next month that seemed appropriate. You know, we would have public hearing and deny it or approve it. I just, I'm concerned that items are under litigation language and we need to get us...
Well, it's like this, it's, it's, we've agreed not to use that. There's no danger, those haven't been used, and they're not going to be used until this is resolved. If it's resolved in our favor, we can put them in, then fine. If not, then obviously, we can't do it. I don't, I don't see the need for a deadline, because there's nothing happening. What's, what's, once we have our meeting in June, that property sets vacant for one whole year. And I feel sure that we can get that accomplished by then. But to try to put a, I mean, is this normal to put a time, a piece?
Well, I knew that there was an application for Mr. Fletcher in my district, that was a special exception, that wasn't taken out of a certain amount of time, and it did sort of expire, and I remember it was six months or a year. You know, if we were to be more mindful of moving the process forward, it could prevent, you know, things like that from happening.
I think the distinction there is that we did not have a preliminary review that we had. We had an application that had been sort of accepted and on through hearing, in which case there is a clock that is started in our approval process. Given that we're under a preliminary review at this point, I don't think a clock starts. So we're not even pretending to be a lawyer. But at this point, we are, I don't think we're under any risk of being somehow interpreted as passive approval at this stage. So, I, I'd be inclined to not get wrapped around the deadline axle, if I may. I would like to keep the motion at stake.
We have a motion, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? She wants to try the motion again, or should it? It's always easier to just vote, but it's also nice to know exactly what you're voting on. You have a motion, it's moved and seconded. And I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to move us on to the next item. These are separate special use applications, but I can see some, some benefits of considering them together in some regard. These are the special use 190401, Golden Springs LLC tourist home, and special use 190402, Golden Springs, the second Golden Springs LLC tourist home. Applicants here, Ms. Summers, would you like to team these up?
Yes, thank you. Again, this is a preliminary review of the applications. The planning commission can make a motion or move to hold a public hearing next month if they so desire. Golden Springs LLC has requested special use permits for two tourist homes. One is located at 63 High Main Lane, one is located at 122 High Main Lane. The property is then agricultural and is roughly 570 acres in size. I have reviewed the ordinance, and does both these applications meet all requirements for tourist homes? The Health Department has been contacted, and we have not received yet any comments.
If the applicant is here, is there anything you'd like to add or modify from the application before we consider...
The only thing that I have, I asked to make is a veg.
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 My name's Matt Icey, I'm here, I'm Golden Springs LLC. So, I guess in order to get this approved, they need to dig up the septic tank and dig up the distribution box, which I have no idea where those are. I know what the septic tanks are, I don't know what the distribution boxes are. And after four years of finally immigrating and finally growing, I said, "Medge, do I have to dig up the yard again?" And so that's really my question. If I rent the house on an annual basis with somebody with 10 kids, I don't have to do this. But if I only rent it on Friday and Saturday night to Airbnb, when they don't do laundry, I do have to do this. Am I correct?
Yep.
So, I guess I would ask that. Some may consider those rules, because that offends my common sense. But if that's what has to be done, that's what has to be done. Would you dig up the yard one more time? That's all I have to do.
Thank you, so the applications are otherwise...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Why don't you ask Medge if you can have a private soil person look at it and evaluate it?
What, who would that be? Such a...
AOS, an AOS.
A O S D.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Well, but he has a, he has an operating septic. I mean, a soil scientist is going to be looking into the soil.
No, they also look at the existing...
They look at repair and everything else. Or broken, like you...
It's not a big question.
Yeah, so I know there's septic tanks, we have them all, we've responded to property. The question is, where are the distribution boxes? No clue. That's the only question.
They can find it for...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. But, do you know where they are?
No.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Mead, I believe?
It is, I just, after seeing the emails on late this afternoon from Michelle, I am hesitant to schedule it for a public hearing or move it forward without some confirmation that they're going to be working if we are going to approve it for that kind of a use.
Mr. Henry, you seem to be poised to say something? Would you like to add the...
Well, I mean, I can see where it would be a very vital concern if we, you know, was dealing with a lot of Chester Gap, that was a half an acre, or a lot someplace else surrounded by neighbors that was one to two acres. But I guess when you're dealing with a five hundred acre site, I think probably anything wrong was plenty ample repair room and, you know, even if you have to pump it a quarter of a mile or something. And, you know, I, the previous owners, you know, I think Tom Walker, we did that one house when he was there. And, you know, I think, I think with a little bit of research over the next 30 days, I think this can be resolved pretty easily about the septic. So, you know, being so large, I don't have a problem. I don't think we'll step on any eggs.
Mr. Bird, do you have comments on that?
I think that this is a very reasonably remediable thing and that it could be done inside of the month.
Ms. Smithing?
I mean, sign the table until the packet is complete with the information from Medge.
Mr. Collier?
I think our process requires, as I remember, requires that there be a Health Department approval. And I don't think we can, even though I agree that it would be easily remediable and an issue, it's part of the process and unfortunately, it's the way it is. And we can't make an exception here and then not make an exception somewhere else.
So I would only comment that, again, we're not talking about recommending for approval or not this evening. It seems to me that we can't sort of, there may be a compromise here that we could agree that contingent upon having the confirmation from the Department of Health and time to have the notification that we would have here in our next meet. That would be something, Ms. Mead, that you would consider...
Yeah, I don't need it to come back for this, whatever we're doing now, this reconsideration.
We're living here, so...
And, and the question I have is, do, because it says, and if deemed necessary, we will hold a public hearing. So can we just make a motion, subject to them getting that? The BZA is the approval authority, it just go to the BZA? Because this is really the process.
You may, you may make such a motion if you'd like to do that.
I will. I move that we table action at this time, and once the necessary Health Department information is provided, it's scheduled for public hearing before the board is opening itself.
So we will be moving it to, what does that leave us with respect to our recommendations?
We wouldn't make a recommendation. That's how I read this in the Summers, just, it says that the planning commission may hold a public hearing and make a recommendation. I don't believe it says we have to.
It's not going to say so.
Yeah, I've never interpreted it that way. I've interpreted that we may have a public hearing, but it is our job to make a recommendation, whether we have a public hearing or not. We can defer the public hearing, but deferring to public hearing does not relieve us of our responsibility of making a recommendation. That doesn't, that's not how I've ever interpreted that. Although I will grant you, it's very ambiguous where...
It's the zoning administrator interprets it, so that can be heard.
So, what is your interpretation? That we don't have to make a recommendation?
That's correct, you can do the shred on the forms and handles.
You can do the trail with the boards and angels.
All right. So, I'm sorry, Ms. Mead, your motion was to table it?
Table action at this time and once the required health department information is provided, we schedule the public hearing for the board of zoning officials.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opponent? Thank you very much. Article one, Pleasant View Rapidic, request to amend proffers on the, such a property.
Pleasant View Rapidic is the platform for every zoning to amend their proffers. In 2002, the property was rezoned from agricultural to general commercial with proffers attached. They now wish to amend the proffers that were agreed to, specifically the resource protection area with reducing of 50 feet. The property is located at the intersection of Bank Road and Schoolhouse Road. If approved, this would be the new location of the food pantry. And Mr. Pluck's here, surveyor, answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. I'll turn it over in a minute, but one of the challenges I had in trying to look at this site plan and put it in context is precisely where it is on that property. I think I figured it out based on sort of sleuthing about where the drainage is and therefore where the protected areas must be. But the site plan is not, at least the way I saw it, for ordinance very well with respect to where on Schoolhouse Road the entrance, the proposed entrance is. It sounds like it's very close to the end toward school.
It's actually about 50 feet, maybe 50, 60 feet from the other, there's another driveway down there where the.
Where the bank is.
Schoolhouse Road goes down around, Schoolhouse Road goes down behind the elementary school at Dead Ends. And where that sharp curve is, goes back to Cadino Cellars is about where that, just before you get to that sharp curve.
Right there.
Yeah. It's right across the street from the parking lot of the school.
Do we have this, we don't have the area of, I mean, it's.
Not we don't.
Yeah, there's one. So here going down Schoolhouse Road, you come past the first entrance of the elementary school on the right and then Bank Road's on the left. And then, so the entrance on Bank, Bank Road, then you go a little bit further down and there's another entrance into a private residence off of Schoolhouse. And just before you get to that, there's the address entrance for this property. That's not shown, but I can see here.
Yeah, this is just showing the entrance off of Bank Road. And it looks like, boy, I was completely backwards. I thought that was north of Bank Road, it was exactly south.
That's all you have right there?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's another entrance that's cut off right here. So there's a, there's an ingress on Bank Road that comes around and hooks over here and comes out of the Schoolhouse Road. The private driveway for the Christopher property here. And then Schoolhouse Road comes up here and hooks around. And I guess the, I think the buses come out and come around and come down Schoolhouse Road that way.
So where's the second?
The second entrance is cut off on this picture. It's actually right here, Schoolhouse Road. This isn't the entire page. You have.
We have the large copy of the site plan.
You have the large copy? I should have brought it.
Well, I think what's on.
This is for Brown's old house?
Yes.
That's it, that's it.
Yeah, so this, this doesn't show, doesn't even show Schoolhouse Road. You can't see that. I should have brought another copy of it, seeing as you have the word on here.
How many did I give you?
It's been a long time. So, all right, well, so this is in Hampton, is that?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
So I'm still having to get more, and I went out there, I thought I had it all figured out and was obviously. But I think my questions are still to remain and might up less advance. There's, yeah, it might not have been a, a typical day or time of year to look at it, but I went out there today, that stream was flowing pretty robustly. And I guess, at the time of the original proffer, the notion was that, that that buffer was needed to presumably, I'm not sure why, was presumably to deal with potential flooding or, you know, building into that, that area around that ditch or drainage. I guess I, I have not heard, I don't think there's anything in the application thus far that sort of explains why you don't think this is necessary when you thought it was something to offer back the first one. I'm not sure.
I wasn't, I wasn't in a position to give them time either, which you prefer, please. It wasn't even aware of, to be honest, with all the property. And so they were added as a proffer and we're not sure exactly what happened. Nobody can figure out how they got added in there. It may have been something that Greenway had done originally when they did the first site plan, so.
Have you, have you looked at the potential, I mean, I guess the way to put it is, and I think the consideration for us is whether the, the proximity to the ditch would create additional water quality or other issues that would be driven to our consideration of the request. Obviously, a 10-foot buffer is less than a 50-foot buffer.
Right. Well, I mean, there's ways to, in the design process, to keep water quality out. So you should, you should, the water going into the stream immediately, the tension pump or something like that can be done. There's lots of ways that you can slow down water before it gets there and let it pass through a filter of some sort. But, you know, it's, it's going to have a 10-foot vegetated buffer. Right now, there's some woods along there. They also want to relocate the stream a little bit to get the entrance in. So there's a couple of things in there that are, where they're going to, they're going to have to keep process to do that.
This is a lot too. What lot numbers?
You have the plot? Yeah. So it's just lot here, lot four, so that stream runs all the way down to here.
The land slopes pretty steeply on both sides too, that stream.
Yeah, well, no, actually, this, this side it's not that steep, the other side's steep. And it's got, you know, they're limited on, they have drain fields all over the place in order to, you know, to do anything. This lot has got a drain field up here, two drain fields in the middle here. And I'm not sure that, I think I showed the two drain fields, three of the drain fields on the front. So, yeah, this, this lot is limited by that 10-foot strip.
What is the acreage of the last, sorry, pieces on there?
Three points. So, and then what the fifth manager wants to do is buy an acre, acre plus or minus, and build a facility on it and own the property so they don't have to keep moving it. So that's what it's on, it's on general, it's on, so one acre is the minimum.
And so what would the proffer amendment look like? Just, you know, an acre here is where you would, your plan would be changed and remove it just there, not the whole?
Where to put this, the lot's going to sit this way, down the side of the, make it along the stream, not quite parallel. So there'll be a one-acre piece that fronts on Schoolhouse Road. And then what we want to do is reduce the buffer to 10 feet for the majority of this property and then go back to whatever 50.
And keep it here.
Yeah.
Is this the?
The only thing he's asking for right now is this, on this portion of the property, based on that site.
Is this the buffer near this line here?
Roughly, yes.
This is just the stream.
No, it's actually, the stream juts out, so this, this buffer doesn't quite follow it properly. If you follow the center of the stream, you've got, you can see the wooden line is where the existing buffer is.
It's actually defined as 50 feet on either side of the stream. So I guess that would raise a question, if you poop the stream, would you still need to poop the buffer?
Right, right. That's another, another issue, right. So there was one, one thought of just putting it in the ground, pumping the whole stream through there. And which can be done, it just has to go through a big process, probably super expensive. But then, does that resource protection area go away if you pipe it? Or does it stay? So if it, one way or the other, we would have to come back and deal with getting a reduction on that.
So, I don't know, you know, further progress on this. I know when we spoke about it earlier, there is some stream bed protection provisions. And it was unclear, and this is a very sticky issue, I know, as to what constitutes a stream, whether this is a, is or isn't a permanent stream or whether it's just a temporary drainage. Do you consider that and do you have a?
It's not my area, it's actually a, 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 a pretty small, we're.
It looks to me like a stream, but of course, we've had significant rain in the last few days. I would, well, I don't know, I, I, that to me is the concern. I guess if you simply relocate the stream bed, it seems like you could still have, maybe get what you need with, and keep the 50 on it. Because it looks like what you're proposing here, we can use a building area without, without moving the stream.
Well, there's one, the way we have it right now is we're moving the stream only at the beginning, where it comes out of the culvert and juts strong right, makes a big hook and comes back again. And that's the area where we want to put an entrance in. And that's the only place we're really looking at relocating the stream.
That's it.
But relocating it would also allow for us to reduce the buffer in that area. We need, because right now you're not allowed to park in this resource protection area, not allowed to do anything except crossing the nine and a angle. So it's very little info, what you can do.
Is the resource protection under DEQ? Is that?
No, it's a proffer from the town, it's a proffer from the town.
And there's really very little either to, it, so far at least, we could not find anything in the ordinance that would have required it and was obviously offered as a voluntary proffer. But there's very little indication in any record I've seen as to why it was done and what was the, I mean, obviously, it was to protect the stream. But I guess I'm, I feel like it would be helpful to understand better what the, what the design of that would look like and how it would be protective of the resource. I feel personally, it's a little challenging to, to back off on it without more information on how we know that it's okay to, we're building and having parking that close to the school.
Well, they're actually, and they're going to move the stream.
Just at the end.
Yeah, just at that one, that one end.
That where it juts up, if it turns right, goes over and comes back, it's just going to be completely moved. So is that a, is that a, I thought you were going to have to move the stream. Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not money you're moving. It's a process to go through, we're going to have to have an engineer come in and take care of all that. But until we know whether we can get rid of the proffers, isn't it just going to?
So, I think, when we rezoned this, there was a lot of concern about the neighbors, the grounds, the cussings coming to the house at that time. There was a lot of concerns about the neighbors, about the stream and the water, everything about this development. And I think that was one of the reasons why this property was put in here by G D V. They tried to placate and make this as pleasant as possible. It was a big turnout for the public hearings, even the sheriff came and spoke against it at that time.
It's my understanding that Garrett doesn't recall it, and that's what I was told, he doesn't recall this property coming into effect. Garrett, Garrett Lee. Is it Mike there? Mike's his brother, Mike, Mike, sorry. Well, John Foot was involved with it on behalf of the bank at that time, too.
Well, Garrett, Mr. Henry, do you have any other questions of the applicant? I guess I'd like to give others an opportunity to ask questions or make comments if you.
Only asked one, that's all I asked so far. I didn't have a lot of time, it's like, if you have more questions, you're not good at that time. I'm missing them here. Go ahead, you're finished.
I deserve the right to not be finished, but now I'm finished. Ms. Mead, do you have any questions or?
So I'm just curious, is it, is it your expectation or your expectation that when we schedule this republic hearing, we will have revised proffers? And we will have a revised concept development plan?
Revised, how so?
Just because right now, it just says, you know, that you will, and it's the 50-foot perpendicular, so you will change the language to what you propose and revise the concept.
Yeah, I guess we'll revise it so that it shows exactly what we want on the, this is probably going to end up being, I think any engineer can work within what I've laid out on here, but it's, we're going to end up having to come back with a complete site plan anyway. From my understanding, when we start to.
So my point is, it just, the cover letter says a reduction, but you want to change this proffer document, so we have to see how you change it and how it would change the general development plan.
Okay, so you need to change the document to indicate.
You would have a new proffer statement.
Okay, a new proffer statement, okay.
And then just how this.
That, can we use the new proffer statement that refers to a drawing that's specific of where the property would be on the ground or?
You can work out those logistics with the zoning administrator, but I just, this is what was approved and that proffers are just how these two things will change. I'm not as concerned about the reduction because they're going to have to have a storm weather management plan, they're going to have to get permits from DEQ, and the regulations have changed dramatically improved since the 90s when this is done, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. And, sorry, I go ahead and violate, say I have another question. Was, were we only talking about this particular parcel because the, was this, was your original proffer was for the broader?
Well, we, yes, we're only talking about this part of the property, this, which is the, part of Lot Four would, would be affected by this food pantry site. The relocation and, what is that, the, I guess the southern side of the stream, is that direct, the southern side of the stream?
Yeah, I guess the reason I ask the question is, I'm trying to get my head around whether the rezoning request would open up the entire rezoning or just the rezoning of this particular piece of it. Sounds like it would be, unless we did something, unless something else was proposed, we're talking about the entire scope of the original, the original rezoning. Right? It seemed to be.
I tell it's.
Yeah. You might want to think about that.
Yeah, well, I guess we, you got one to honor of all the parcels except for the bank, right? I think so, yeah, I think, well, I think it's two LLCs, but it's, I think they're both on, I believe in the bank.
Mr. Coler, have you got any thoughts you'd like to share, questions to ask?
No, I've looked at this pretty carefully. I saw the elevations for the building, but then, we see they're quite fit, the slope of the land, but that's, that's the.
Those, those things are probably to be back before you, when you actually go through this. But the only thing that this really is, one of the drafts is the proffers. And so.
Sorry, why would they do that before us if it's rezoned to commercial? I don't know that we would.
No, you, you don't, whenever they put a building on there, there should have to be a site plan.
Site plan. The orange part of it. But does that part of the planning commission?
Yeah, I think you guys have to review the site plan.
Okay.
What I might, what I think I will do is I'll talk to them about fixing the proffers and putting together a new plan that just addresses only the relocation of the resource protection area, use all the other buildings and, you know, details of this.
I think one of the issues that was in the past was that the use of the school. I think one of the issues that was in the past was the use of the school road. I believe the plan here is to limit times when this would be open so that there not be a lot of traffic coming in during the school bus line. I don't know if that's under our purview or not, but...
That's not an issue, Mike.
Yes, that's an issue. Well, that is, we're going to address that, too. That's going to be addressed for DDOT, everybody else. And it will be on the face of the... When we do bring it back.
Anything else, Mr. Kohler?
Go ahead.
Smith, do you...
I don't think I have.
Nor I, but I guess that brings us back to this question of what are we doing with this, this evening?
This is preliminary review, right? So next would be whether you wanted to have a public hearing?
Or make a specific requirement. Again, we had a discussion about what we would be looking for, but I guess so. Mr. Henry, I'll defer to you if you'd like to put forward any kind of motion on how we discuss with this this evening.
I guess move that we scheduled a public hearing of this. Thirty-eight, yeah, oh yeah. Subject to a completed revised... Proffers and development plan. Can I ask a question? Short development plan or just a plan of the proffers?
Just this updating, this, the general development plan that was approved as part of the proffer. So just this little schematic, and just in that one little area. Just where you're... The one we were looking at.
I didn't see that, I remember you probably... Okay, got it, all right.
We have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings us to the last item of new business this evening. That we do have a special exception, nineteen oh five oh one, that will be educational use. I believe the applicant is still here, yes?
Still here.
Thank you for sticking with us, Mike. Ms. Summers, would you like to tee this up? I must say that I'm not clear exactly on what we're being asked to change here and why, but hopefully that will become clear as we move on.
Susan Hoffman and Mike Finnick have applied for a special exception for thirty-six Bellme Lane to convert a residential house to educational use for classrooms for low, lower level grades. The property is owned agricultural and is seven acres in size. A special exception permit was obtained in nineteen ninety-seven to operate the school Bellme and for day camps on a adjoining piece of property they own. The permit was amended in nineteen ninety-nine to relocate a schoolhouse building. The maximum number of students they were approved for in nineteen ninety-seven were forty-five students. At this time, they are not proposing to increase the number of students above what is permitted. I have not received any comments back from the health department or VDOT yet. The health department did indicate they haven't been on site, but Mr. Finnick has reported that they have had no problems with the system and that the system is only ninety years old and in good soil. So they don't anticipate any problems. And again, Mr. Finnick is here if anyone has any questions for him. I recall it's clear in that this is a joining piece that then will be used for that school education.
So, so if I may, just that I have a couple of questions about the... So we talked about the, the property is the one where the house is now, and it's also is the B and B?
No, it's the property. And I'm not sure what year we bought the school, but the school was on, well, it was originally an acre. It was too small and too close to the road to operate the school. We're now putting Jersey walls and barriers. So we moved it back. The school actually then sat between the, what was the left, three quarters acres in the farm. We made a boundary adjustment to create approximately seven acres with the school on it. And in ninety-nine, we went through the, which was about the time we bought the school to get permission to operate the school. And I thought we had the permission for, as it says, the school housing adjacent, new purchase as an applicant to operate the school there. We've been operating the school there for fifteen years. So what we're doing new is opening up the school to the lower grades, preschool through fifth grade. Presently, we operate the school six through twelve grade. And to create those space for those lower kids, separate from the middle school and the high school, we were going to take the tenant house, which is on the same property the school is, and create the school. And also, there's some confusion because when I filled it out, I was confused about code section one seventy-three-six, which was mentioned in the D. And that was thirty-six B, which allows the school, and I'm not sure what part that was. And the second part was one seventy-six-three B. I don't know if I transposed it or what. So we have permission for B, C, and E now. The only difference, that would be different was for the preschool, there's, I believe, another standard, standard D, which only addresses the minimum area in which preschool kids need, which is a hundred square feet. And older kids need, I think, either a hundred and fifty or two hundred, depending on what grade level, so...
So you have an addition, different standards for this parcel? Well, thank you, that certainly helps me understand. And maybe additional questions, but I appreciate that. Sorry, Ms. Smith, this is in your district. I do need to jump in. There were some overall questions there.
Not at all. It was some of the same questions that I had, actually. And I think, I mean, that's my only concern is that there are not a lot of specifics in the application as to why a new application and exception is required. So I would just like a little bit more detail about why we're doing this and what all we're approving and the process of doing this. I went back and read the Red Hat News article about it, and I thought that contained a lot of the details in terms of numbers and locations for the school that's proposed. So I would just like to see some of the same kinds of details that are in the Red Hat News article in the, in the actual application.
So in terms of which structures are to be used and for what purpose?
And where the children would be. I guess that some of the children would be in the lower level of the house, you know, their basement. We just want to make sure that there's, that there's exits and, you know, that it's a, that all the safety for caution set.
And a building will be required for a change of use from a residential structure to a commercial education structure. So those items will be addressed in the building official.
Okay, very good. So would we look for a document for his law before we did this?
He would not comment until he actually has a set of plans. So I'm firm when they make application.
Okay.
That's when he would address those code items. And, you know, safety in and out, you know, egress, ingress, all sorts of different items.
That's, that's the sort of thing I, I really was hoping to find in the application and think would, you know, do what we would need to see you incorporate.
Jay Monroe has done up some plans. I think you have a copy of them. Now I gave him a copy. I'm a little bit confused also why before that, um, zoning, because I thought the property was pretty much done that way.
So it sounds like it's a question of whether that one parcel was or was not subject to the original special exception, is that...
Additional building.
I've reviewed the file from ninety-seven to ninety-nine and determined that a new special exception would need to be obtained.
I'm trying to agree with that. You've got the build DBs here, right?
For the tenant house, to use part of it.
So we've contacted the neighbors. I haven't heard back. Talked to M G S. Sue her and had contacted VDOT requesting entrance.
The entrance, the entrance that you're talking about, though, would be the same entrance for you.
Same entrance, yeah.
And the same number of people, just a different age distribution of the students, so... Thank you, anything else, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Byrd, do you have any comments or questions?
What it seems to me is that we are here to either approve the use subject to all of the necessary safety and building requirements. And so it would seem that, are we here to schedule a public meeting on it?
Well, again, this is, we're in this odd procedural space where we have this preliminary review, which we used to pretty much delegate implicitly to the zoning administrator. But now we're, we're seeing these applications for this preliminary review. And as we discussed earlier, seems that the vagary of the language of what we do on this preliminary review can be used to our favor to do what we want, a prospective hearing or a recommendation or a non, non-recommendation. So it is a preliminary review, and those are, I think our options are all of those, all of the above, prospective hearing or requesting additional information and tabling, or as we did in the last one, request additional information and propose a hearing for the next, the next body.
It would seem that it's a kind of ancillary use to the existing institution. And that I don't see a particular problem with it. It would seem a lesser use than building, entirely building somewhere else.
Thank you, anything else? Mr. Henry?
I guess determine what level of site plan we want here. Help from VDOT and go from there. And then, you know, the operational, we buy it operational for the additional grades and if this is addressed in here, it's sufficient for everybody's need. And we're ready to go. I guess, what level of site plan do we want?
In that it's an existing structure, I'm comfortable with that. You know, just knowing what structure we're talking about. I do think, you know, understanding what's going to take place in there, the number of children that'll be in there so that we can ensure that three hundred gallons have to take is adequate, but... And just to be clear about my motion on the last one, the reason I perform a public hearing at the planning commission levels because it was a special permit. And there intended to be less impactful uses. Whereas special exceptions rezonings are bigger type, so just to everyone who's...
That's their clarification. Anything else on this one? Ms. Mead, are you still contemplating or...
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Kohler, are you, any question?
No, I go for the comments.
Well, Ms. Smith, you've heard about it. You know, I guess to me, the, the questions you raise are good ones about, you know, confirming that there isn't any intention for additional construction and to, and to get the clarity on the use of the, more particular, rather, use of the building, I think are perfectly reasonable. I guess I'll defer to you in terms of how you, how you want to move this forward to see to it that those, those questions are answered satisfactorily.
I would just say that similar to other things we've heard this evening with, with the addition of the blue terms are actually very helpful. And the site plan for the changes that are proposed, as well as a little more detail on the number of students that are involved, that we should go ahead and schedule it for a public hearing for next month.
At our, at here.
Yeah, correct, thank you.
So you're moving that we schedule that public hearing conditioned on getting that additional detail on the site plan and the, and the use of the property.
Correct. And I guess if there's more children entering and exiting and just slightly, well, it was originally approved for forty-five, it's still not, still not four-five.
It's the same, the same number total, it's the age distribution.
So I mean, not let VDOT or the department of health play in on it because the...
I wouldn't see why they would because the number total, I would think that they're interested in the total number of trips and the total number of students, not the age distribution. But as you noted, some of the requirements, Mr. Finnick commented, there are slightly different requirements for younger children. So there is, there are some additional considerations.
I don't think you would need VDOT, but I think you would need the health department because you're talking about using a new structure that has just a two good room.
That's correct, yes. I would be in the tenant house, but subject to VDOT. Now, same from the department of, regarding the...
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So we have a motion. So, any further discussion?
That motion includes a site plan for...
Yes, sir.
And the request would be to have that information perhaps reviewed by Ms. Summers to confirm that we have what we're looking for in time to allow notice for that.
Yes, it's good to be deemed complete by Ms. Summers so that it can be analyzed for public hearing. So next week, you have a planning commission.
Are you okay with that, Michelle? We have a motion that has been made and seconded, seconded by Mr. Kohler, I believe. Any further discussion?
I would only add that we're giving them until the next meeting if they can't get that done by, in time. Because I only give them a couple of weeks. We could make it to the next, before the meeting.
That's right, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting. Just until you deem it complete, then it will come back.
And we will go ahead and, as long as we have notice ahead of a meeting, we'll go ahead and schedule a hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess I'll get with you, Michelle, and keep the detail up. I heard them all.
Yes, sir.
That's what I need to do.
All right, that brings us to full business. I guess we now have two items, the current plan update and this question about whether we want to consider a deadline after the application. I didn't have much to say on the comprehensive plan. I guess I wanted to provide a bit of an update from our last work session and say, if you could share some of my thoughts, I guess, on how we continue to make progress on that. You will recall from our meeting that we did arrive at some kind of leadership responsibilities. I appreciate everybody who offered to sort of be on point for the individual chapters. Since our meeting, Ms. Mead has graciously agreed to be on point for chapter seven and discuss some of the things we're trying to do there. So I guess I want to just reiterate that what we're trying to do here is get to the point of getting the, the missing pieces and other things that we can reasonably do in the same timeframe that it takes us to get the missing pieces. And what I would like to propose, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you all about your availability at this point, but I feel like the meeting, the two weeks between our regular meetings to continue or works, have work sessions to make progress has been working pretty well. I'd like to propose that we continue that and schedule another work session on the twenty-ninth, two weeks? ninth, two weeks, twenty ninth, two weeks from today. And at that time, if that schedule works, before we discuss the time, but I'd like to see it, that that work session is if the folks who have agreed to kind of focus on some of these individual chapters would make an effort to bring to that work session their attempt at that language so that we continue to make progress with the goal of scheduling a public hearing sometime in the summer months when we reached, when we made this additional pass to make things compliant and do whatever revisions that we feel we can comfortably make it during that period. Again, trying to strike a balance between reacting to some of what we're hearing from the public, but not slowing the process down at this stage in accordance with the discussion we had whenever we were talking about options one, two, and three. So those are my thoughts on the comprehensive plan. I could just open it up if others want to weigh in on that or suggest an alternative approach. But as I see it, we've got some tentative assignments, appreciate that. And I would propose that we get together on the 29th and work through those, whatever that team can accomplish.
We can also have an item on the board supervisors' agenda for consulting group called the Berkeley Group.
Ah, yes.
That's Curry and each other too. But he has established an agreement with them, by the way, that the board, you know, should be decided that he would need that consulting.
Thank you very much. That's set my mind. I did want to add that on the comprehensive plan review. I believe there's no, as I understand it, this is really within the decision framework and scope of Mr. Curry's authority. His request from us was to have us take a look at the proposed scope of work. I think his point was he would rather, he would like us to be comfortable with the scope of work that has been proposed before he decides whether he'd like to spend this on this way. So thank you for the reminder. I know folks have had an opportunity to review this, but that if so, comments on the scope of work. I don't know if we need to have these necessarily tonight, is there a time? I didn't hear from Mr. Curry whether there was a a time, I think the time set, actually, we did discuss it. In an ideal world, if we would have this scope and we would be generally in agreement that we can have this Berkeley Group at our next work session, that might also be an avenue for progress. Ms. Smith, was there anything else you wanted to add from the supervisor's perspective on this scope of services?
No, I don't think so. It was just that I go to the board the last meeting, so.
So I don't believe there's any action particularly required this evening. If you have thoughts or comments on the scope of work, again, it's in Mr. Curry's hands at this point. And does anybody have any particular thing to say about the idea of having that meeting on the 29th? If not, we'll go ahead and try to schedule that. And apologies for not.
Is it thought that we keep going on with this individual assignments for the 29th? And then it would all go this route, should the board decide to use this individual?
I think that really the commission is in the driver's seat. The intention is not to take the steering wheel out of the commission's hands. I think the intention of the board is to, you know, offer the services should, should they be necessary. To have the services formed up.
Yeah, in an advisory capacity, as we're working through this, we might find ourselves sort of stymied with thicker language. But I don't know, part of your question was, are we planning to continue on this path? I, my first interpretation of that was that will we keep working on these work sessions? And my thought is it's working pretty well. I would say, yes, we should. It seems like we have enough work being scheduled on our regular meetings that we really don't have much time at these meetings to delve into the details other than to kind of reconnect with respect to process. So I would like to continue.
And my question is not about the work session, but are we going to continue on with our assignments? Or would we pause and hear what this group has to say and see if they take the steering wheel?
At this point in time, my hope would be that we continue those assignments that you might have a co-pilot for it.
Can I have any question that we would accept this generous offer from the board supervisors?
We don't need a motion, we just need consensus.
Yeah, I don't think there's any real action before us, other than to say heads up, we're going to have another session on the 29th.
I did have a question from Michelle about the data for the chapters two to five. I was wondering when that would be updated? Because that's what I've promised to work on and I need to make sure that's in place.
I can touch base with you through email and let you know how I'm going.
Yeah, even if you just get portions of it and I don't do it, that would be great.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think the goal would be we get, take it as far as we can by the 29th. We recognize that, you know, my goal is to keep making the progress until we're at a point where we feel we've done what we can reasonably do in this round and avoid the scenario of continuing this indefinitely, but also try to address some of the concerns that we raised and we've agreed to take up. So anything else on that topic? So not, I'd like to move on to the the question of the deadline for the Capielli application. I guess, again, there have been comparisons made to the Fletcher application, but I do think we're, again, we intervene on this application at the preliminary review stage. I don't feel like we're at risk that the clock has started. But I think it is generally, we have these, we table these things requesting the information generally assuming that the applicant will be somewhat timely in their provision of that. And in this case, we now aren't, I guess, two months, two months without anything. So it occurred to me that that probably wasn't what any of us imagined would happen. So I thought it was worth discussing whether we wanted to put this back on the agenda at our next meeting to perhaps at a deadline. I don't know that we want to set that deadline here tonight, but I think if we are so inclined to put a deadline on it, we should put that on our agenda for the next meeting. People have thoughts about their, is our ability of putting a timeframe on it?
Well, I'd like to ask myself, did Mr. Capielli discuss recently putting coming back again?
He did discuss. He contacted me on telephone when he wanted to get on the agenda for tonight. I told him the agenda, you know, had already been finalized and posted. He did ask if he'd come to public comment and speak on the site plan. But that's not typically how the procedure works, that, you know, if he submitted it to me, I will provide it to the commissioners. And I haven't yet to see anything.
So it does seem like he is, I think, very actively engaged in these claims. Other thoughts? Mr. Henry, do you have thoughts on how you.
I think that we have to treat everybody the same on these applications. And this past year, where we do the preliminary review and then make some type of action at the end of there, it seems like there's an inconsistency there on what we're telling the people. I think we have to be consistent. And we haven't been consistent and we have to decide and whether it's going to be, we expect people back in four months, within four months, within six months or some timeframe. And I guess that has to do with, you know, I don't know to say wrong on that, maybe it's not, maybe it's whatever we want or there is. But I think we have to be legal in whatever timeframe and we have to apply equally to everybody. And then the second thing is here too, I think in the litigation, the kinds of litigation with people, we have to be extra sure that whatever we do doesn't inflict with or provide to the applicant with recourse to use against the county and court. So there's two lines here, I think, the line where now Capielli is even more thin and more precise we have to be. So, yeah, that's, I think, that's what we need to look at.
Well, I think with respect to the consistency, what we've generally done is deferred.
It can't be generally, we've got to be excited.
Well, we have discretion, obviously, the word we have in our set of choices is gives us a reign of discretion. I don't know that I agree that we need to be exactly, just the point I was going to make is what we did tonight, for example, is we agreed that we didn't need to set a deadline because the applicant, I mean, the applicant has an interest in this, presumably they want to get their use approved. So I guess the question is, is that enough? Or do we need to, you know, if we're at a point where we feel like the lack of information is an indication that we are not likely to get the information or that there's some other compelling reason to move ahead with something other than approval? I think that's the discretion we face. And I don't know that that needs to be the same, I mean, the circumstances for every application are somewhat different. So I, first of all, we haven't been doing this, I don't know that it had actually been inconsistent. I think we considered them consistently. We just, based on the circumstances, come up with different requests in these cases. And I'm not sure, by saying consistent, are you saying we should give him a deadline? We should give everybody a deadline or are you, you know, what?
I think, I think we should have a deadline for the application. Whether it's four months, six months, whatever.
Ms. Mead, do you mind finding out how others or how that's treated elsewhere?
Well, I don't know what other jurisdictions do. Fauquere has a certain time period that you deem an application either complete or incomplete. And then once it's deemed complete, you have timelines of when it has to be approved.
And what if it's, what if it spends too much time in incomplete state because at some point does it?
Then you have an enforcement division that, you know.
Assuming it's an ongoing activity.
It seems to me that you have a very reasonable concern here that the Capielli is, seems to be delaying. And that that is a at some point, it would seem that needs to be called and dealt with. And if we don't have a limitation, there's no real incentive to fulfill the application and.
We could say up to 90 days, I'm not. Either 60 or 90, that's sometimes when things get tabled that because one month is just too quick to turn it back around. You have to add.
But he's under enforcement anyway.
Yeah, as I said, while I agree that any action or inaction we take could be brought up in a court and might be used or attempted to be used to bolster one's position. I don't think, I think our job really is about the applications. And while I agree that we shouldn't muddle that, I also don't think it's really possible for us to fully navigate both our process and the court process. I would like to be sure that we're taking a consistent view of our own application process. And we think it's important that when we ask for additional information, we put a deadline. I think the idea of adopting a policy or at least turning on a policy that we give 60 or 90 days when we ask for this additional information, the table is a perfectly reasonable one. Having not done that, when we originally tabled Capielli, I'm going to interpret this, these comments to be that we should put it back on the agenda for next month and recognize that we may move forward with whatever information we have at that time. And if we don't have the site plan, the likelihood is that we would move forward with an unfavorable recommendation. Is that in my accurately reflecting the view of the commission?
No. I don't want to do anything with him that could give him down some more litigation in the court. He wasn't told that when he left here, he was given civics. And we left a timeframe open that he was going to come back in soon. And now he's not here, we've had this discussion, there's minutes, there's press here. And I don't want to put something on him with his litigation going on that could be looked like that we're trying to corral him or force some resolution of the court case.
Okay.
I agree with that, especially since this was added to your agenda at the last minute. So I don't, I don't think we should take any action on this at the moment.
Well, we wouldn't be, but my point is simply to say what we would do for our next meeting is we would put this back on the agenda with or without the site plan come. Not to disagree with your point, I think you're making a very valid point. Just want to be clear that I wasn't talking about putting a deadline on it tonight. But it sounds like what you're suggesting is we just keep the status quo with the recognition that we don't have control over the timeframe and we will put it back on the agenda at the time.
No, I think Michelle, I think Michelle can request of him whether or not to put it on in June, July's agenda. And with his approval, put it on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I don't agree that we should be giving any deadline, any particular personal thing. We need to just decide if we're going to have a deadline in general for all applications to drop dead. And then you'd have to just start the application process again.
It seems that's a very reasonable idea. That isn't prejudicial, but it is, it involves a certain amount of effort and expense on the applicant's part. And that is the incentive to move the application along.
All right, so we can address that when we face new applications. And I think that's a bit of a healthy conversation. I thank you for that. So with respect to Capielli, we try again to reflect revised understanding. Sounds like he's been requesting to get on the agenda anyway. We will continue to, I guess what's different about this than what we said originally is we will put it back on the agenda once we get the information. At this point, I guess what we're saying is if he'd like to get back on the agenda, we'll put him on the agenda. But we'd still.
Well, then the bird is on him.
Bird, recognize that we want the completed application.
If you have a completed application, then we can go ahead and move forward and take action.
To, to, yeah.
Yeah, so if he says June, fine. If he says July, fine.
Everybody okay with that? Any clear concerns? Thank you for indulging me on that one. Moving on to informational items.
Anybody who's interested in attending, please contact me. I'll take care of getting registered and set up if any sales needed. Just give me a call or email. The next item.
Well, I was just going to say, if you have questions about it, I'd be glad to chat about it. I have the materials and talk to you about it. I mean, on towards last year, assuming it's probably the same. It is a bit of a commitment, but I'd be glad to chat about it if you're interested. Sorry for the summary, but so the next item is the direction of the zoning ordinance meant to be supervised. You may have noticed that there's some additional section on board docs.
We found, we found one particular item that had been, kind of forgot about, of resolutions in the past by the board supervisors. The planning commission has never taken action on, so as new items, we already have quite the list. We try to keep in our minds as we work through this comprehensive plan. I thought it would be helpful to keep a running list on board docs. And you can see that there's two tiny little check marks, let's probably get those darkened off. What we've completed and what we haven't, it's just the easier way for us to keep track of what work needs to be done. That's it. It's simply for informational purposes only. And if you click on any of the, for instance, adaptive uses, it'll pull up that resolution. So you can click on any of them and it'll pull up what directed it to come to the planning mission. That's it.
Agreed.
And that concludes our agenda for the evening. So kindness to move that we adjourn?
We'll move.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Have you...
See you there. Good to see you.
Yeah.